Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Portsmouth School Board meeting for January 11th, 2011. I'd like to ask the superintendent to please take the roll call.
Ann Mayer?
Here.
Carol Chelman?
Here.
Rebecca Remison?
Here.
Dexter Legg?
Here.
Kent LaPage?
Here.
Ann Walker?
Here.
Mitch Shulman?
Here.
Tom Martin?
Here.
Leslie Stevens?
Here.
Clay Haywood?
Here.
Linda Brulette?
Here.
Savannah Fedaro?
Here.
Thank you. If you'll join me for a moment, we'll spend a moment with our own thoughts and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, Kent.
Mitch, can we give our condolences to a past school board member, current teacher and current president of the Teachers Association? Her father passed away, Mr. Vazella, so Roseanne Vazella Clark, who's been a member of our school community for many, many years.
Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertain a motion to accept the minutes of December 14th, 2010.
Awo.
Second. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we'll move into public comment. We have three people signed up this evening, members of our state representatives. So we'll start with Mr. Dipentima, Rich. Welcome and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. McDonough. For the record, my name is Rich Dipentima. I'm State Representative, Representative District 16, Rockingham 16, which covers Portsmouth and Newington, one of seven state representatives covering District 16, and also a resident of Portsmouth residing in 16 Dunlamway. The reason I asked to speak tonight is just to alert the school board of, I think, a significant change in policy that has recently taken place at the New Hampshire House of Representatives. The New Hampshire House on Wednesday of last week passed Rule 63 governing the procedures and actions of the House of Representatives, and I have the full rule here if you're interested in it, but suffice to say, the policy simply changes the availability and the opportunity for individuals now to carry concealed weapons at the State House, including the House Chamber, the House Anteroom, the House Cloak Room, and adjacent areas to those areas, including the visitor gallery. I personally voted against this rule change, but my purpose in coming is not to influence you in terms of your policy issues. I'm here simply to advise you and to inform you as to the policy change and to suggest, for a number of reasons, because of the number of children that attend the State House, that you consider notifying parents prior to visitation to the State House for legal and liability issues as well as safety for children. That's my comment, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Representative Chris Sterling.
I have to talk to Marshall Moody.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Representative Moody. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm State Representative Marsha Moody of Rockingham County, representing District 12, Newmarket and Newfields. I don't know if any of you saw my letters to the editor in today's Portsmouth Herald, but I too want to emphasize that it's very important that any parent who wants his or her child to visit the State House on the annual school trip, which most fourth graders do because it's part of their curriculum, that the parents are aware that their child could be sitting next to an armed adult. And as Rich mentioned, this is very much a liability area, that the schools would be liable if something happened and the parents were not aware that this is very definitely a possibility. That there is a history of this. In 2009, there was a very controversial bill before the House, and the gallery was stacked with a group of protesters. And when the bill did not pass as they had anticipated, they became very agitated, they all stood, they opened their coats, put their hands on their guns, and it was very obvious that they were upset at the ruling of the House. So that doesn't mean this could not happen again. I do want to make one quick comment, and that is, I made a mistake in the statement where I said guns are not allowed in schools. Apparently, they are. There was a law passed during Governor Benson's term that said concealed weapons are allowed everywhere, and there was an attempt to get it forbidden in schools, but it failed, and so the law passed that concealed weapons are allowed. So that means they are allowed in schools, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Representative Sterling.
Thank you, Christopher Sterling, State Rep from here in Portsmouth, 89 Sparrow Oak Street. I don't have a lot to say. As a parent of schoolchildren here, I do think it's important, you know, none of us are interested in politicizing the question or making this a referendum on the Second Amendment, but what I think is interesting is that New Hampshire is now one of only three states that allows concealed or open carry, for that matter, firearms in their State Houses. And a lot of people, I think, operate under an assumption that certain areas are firearm-free, post offices, federal offices, et cetera. In most states, that's also the case of your state government buildings. It's not the case in the New Hampshire House now. So for the sake of you as a policy board, I simply hope that you will consider that and then decide whether you believe that's an actionable item in some way or shape or form. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that we have a clarification that on the records that the Portsmouth school system has policies forbidding any type of weapon on school grounds, which supersedes the state in that regard.
Thank you. Anyone else who didn't sign up would like to speak? Okay. Thank you very much. So we'll move on now to special presentations.
Yes, and so many of you probably had an opportunity to see, the City Council on December 17th actually had a full presentation about the work of the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Efficiencies Committee. There was a full report with a PowerPoint slide, and folks might be advised to go look at that. I think it was very well done and shows the good work that goes on between city staff and the school department. But I did provide a copy of the report in your packet, and Mr. Bartlett, who was intimately involved in the work of the committee, is going to kind of point out some of the highlights of that report and then perhaps a larger conversation from members who did participate on that committee. Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you. As the superintendent's pointed out, you were provided a copy of the draft of the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee Report, Part One, which focuses on the interface with the school departments and several municipal departments. We started off in June in that there were a number of key considerations. We took into account the individual missions of the department because they're not entirely the same. We also took into account collective bargaining, as some of these efficiencies would be affected by the existing agreements that we have. And we also looked at the potential for cost savings as well as improved services, even if there were no cost savings. Current synergies that we have, that you're well aware of, is the very successful recreation athletic director position. We also take advantage of the services of the municipal department to do a lot of our bidding and our purchasing. We take advantage of legal department, not only Mr. Wire that we talked with tonight, but in terms of the building projects, the JBC, we deal with Ms. Woodland. We interface a lot and rely quite heavily in some situations on the Human Resource Department, Ms. Fogarty. Capital Projects Administration has been a welcome help to us, where we've had Dan Hartree, who is now our clerk of the works for the middle school project, has helped us out on a lot of specifications and capital projects. And of course, we've always had help with the administration of our rolling stock as we piggyback with the Public Works Department in that respect. In terms of expanding, obviously, when the middle school is done and when the elementary schools have been revamped, I think that we can expand on our relationship with the rec. department and have them also take over the directorship of the middle school and elementary athletics. We talked about working with the Department of Public Works and doing more in terms of combined contract services, such as the larger tree services and the fertilization stuff. We've gone with, you know, green fertilization, so, you know, starting a model for that. One of the things we found out was that there was a little bit of capacity available in Public Works to do small equipment repairs, which we, previous to this, had farmed out somewhere, so now we'll do it in-house with the Department of Public Works. A couple of new areas to consider, you'll see there's a report later on, but it was brought up that, you know, could we take advantage of coast transportation? There is a pilot program between coast transportation and Portsmouth High School that will start, I believe, next week, and so there's a new synergy there. And one of the biggest ones that also came up was the potential for moving central office to this complex, and that probably could work nicely in terms of the placeholder we have in the capital improvement plan for the reworking of the elementary buildings. We found a couple of areas where we already were able to come up with something before we even done our first meeting. For example, to avoid mobilization costs for the mowing, we realized that if we traded with the Public Works mowing crew, that we'd take over and mow from the high school over to the pool, we'd take over the pool area, and then they would take over the area over by the Shermond School for the Lister Academy, save us, you know, time for mobilization costs and, you know, time and effort. So those are pretty much the highlights that we found. There were, you know, in conclusion, it was just, there were things we're already doing, things we could do, and we discovered some things that, you know, we could start right off quickly without having to go any further. So I think it was a very worthwhile group of questions.
Tom.
Where do we start? Is there any estimation of potential savings that was not put into the report? And were there other areas that need further investigation?
Well, there's always other areas to look at, and we talked about combining some more of the, I think one other one was, you know, if we were to get a little more close proximity, that we could try to get some cross-training in some of the, you know, business processing things, such as payroll. But I think that the progression is, you know, we were Part One, and they're going to deal with the other departments, so I would suspect that when they've done the full, made the full rounds of all the departments, that they could potentially come up with, you know, a list of cost savings. But I think part of what we discussed was there are some efficiencies to be had that may not have yielded cost savings, but would provide better services for the citizens of Portsmouth at the same cost.
Absolutely. So the question on where do we start, is that going to be left? So we have the report, there are some recommendations in the report. Are the recommendations left to department heads to implement, or is this committee also going to sort of continue with a follow-through plan to sit there and say, you know, these things were implemented, or come up with a sort of an implementation plan?
I got the feeling that, you know, they're going to expect, or do expect, that we would take some initiative on our own to, you know, as we proceed with our budget processes and our day-to-day things, that we would, you know, we would jump on these things on our own. But it doesn't mean that by the time they're done going through all the departments that there isn't a formalized list, because this, like I say, is a draft of Part One, which I might point out for anybody watching on TV, that it is also available on the city website if you're interested.
Kent.
I think, you know, to follow up with Tom. Tom, you've got to look at that. This is just, and we have probably, as Steve said, well, we probably have five bricks in the foundation out there currently, four or five, if you look at things that we currently or we did in the past. You've got to look at, this is the mortar and the supplies. There are probably 20 bricks here that could form a full foundation of what we have possibility. I think now that that committee's done, it's up to us to go through this report and say, yes, we want to look at this group within the school system and see if we can eventually make the arrangements to shift and become, you know, the same department, that there is some duplication of departments out there that in the long run would show. There are contractual areas that we have to watch, which is one of those. But, you know, to me, this was a nice committee, but it now has to take form, and I think whether it's us, the police, the fire, municipal, they've got to go back and say what they can go ahead and do. Otherwise, you know, I would hate to see this just be something that gets shelved and the dust collects on it, because it's not what we should be doing. It's now back in our laps to say, here's where we need to discuss it and pursue it. There are things we might have to wait for some contracts and so forth. There are things that we need to do. I think one of the things that was nice out of this, when it was being looked at, we saw internally there were things that we needed to do to be efficient, too. I mean, there were, you know, whether it be building supplies or energies or so forth, and it was a good discussion point. But again, this is far from a completed document. Matter of fact, I wouldn't call it a document, I would just say it's a committee's report out that allows us to go somewhere. And where's the starting point? I would hope within this year's budget. We actually start to say, these are things we pull out.
And I think, just my response to that is just introspection aside, you know, when you don't, when you have a report like this without a mandate, and you're talking about taking other people's departments to say you have to work with that other department when there's no requirement or mandate to do so. So, you know, as you said, dust can collect easy.
Yeah, and I think that's what we need to do, is take this and say, here's where we would like to mandate things down the road in the very near future.
Right. Anne, Dexter, sorry. Anne, Carol, are you raising your hand?
Yes.
Okay.
I really just wanted to thank Jerry Higmanic for cheering the committee and for Carol and Rebecca and Kent, for our people and the city council and community members for working at this. I know it took a lot of meetings, a lot of time, and a lot of meeting of the minds, and I'm sure you all learned a great deal, far more than what's in this report, but great job, and thank you all so much.
Dexter.
So if we could just formalize the next steps so that we're confident that it doesn't collect dust, because in fact, there are a lot of terrific ideas, and as I look at it, they fall into two categories. Ideas that, working with another department, we can take immediate action on, things like combining bids and those sorts of things, and then there's other stuff that requires more study. But I would ask that particularly for those that look actionable now, that the administration identify those and come back and say, based on this report, these are the things that we are going to take action on now, working with the city, and you'll see these incorporated in our budget, just so that it allows us to track back to this and say, yeah, we're implementing this stuff. So if that's possible, if we could get sort of a list of action items that the school department will proceed on, I think that would help, at least help me.
Carol.
Thank you. Just for clarification, Tom, at the very end, there's a section called Future Considerations. You asked if there was any other things you might look there, and I just wanted to add that I found it was a very interesting committee to be on. It was very difficult at times. It seemed like there was, it was a lot harder to change things than I thought it would be. And like, there was one low point when we were all excited about outsourcing, and then we discovered that we can't outsource. But the city can, because it's in their collective bargaining agreement, but not in ours. So, you know, that's my comment on that.
Carol, if I'm correct, that part of that is based on state statute, not just how we run business here in Portsmouth?
I think it's just our collective bargaining.
No, it's collective bargaining units.
There's nothing in the contract that specifically says you can outsource? Doesn't the state of New Hampshire not allow you to then outsource? Is that right?
I think you're right, absolutely right.
So it's not us, it's the state.
So if you don't, it's a subject of bargaining, so if it's not bargaining, then you can...
Oh, it is, right.
It is in ours, so we can't. So you're right. If it's not in there, we could.
Right. Silence means that.
But it is in ours.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Because I just have a couple of quick ones. So I'm glad Dexter brought up what he brought up. It's nice to go last, because then everybody's already asked most of your questions, so if there's anything that you need from us to help you move forward, we'd appreciate letting us know. One question I had, so maybe this is for Mr. Zadravec, but when they talk about the libraries working together and saving money, and I know some of the most expensive parts of libraries these days are not necessarily, I don't know about K-12, but necessarily books, but actually electronic databases that we purchase for students to have access to. So are, in fact, the public libraries and the school libraries purchasing together databases so we can all save money?
Yes, actually, what happens with a couple of those licenses is that we've been allocated, the city gets them, and we back, they back charge us for our share. And that's something that I know that Mary Ann had talked about, checking out to make sure that we had...
The legal right to access those databases.
That, we did have that, but she wanted to make sure that we had all the databases available to make sure there was a continued coordinated effort to make sure that we all shared in the use of the databases regardless of who paid for them.
Okay. And I had one other quick last question. So Carol, you brought up this thing about future considerations. So there's something in here about building utilization and performance, and school buildings are utilized for a limited amount of time throughout the year. Aren't the buildings, the buildings are open all year long? Is that right? You know, community people need to use the buildings?
Yes, I think that comment was the same thing as year-round school, isn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, we utilize them during, you know, for 180 days during the year for our main mission, and I guess that was something that was brought up as, you know, what if you went year-round and used them 260 as opposed to 180?
So they weren't suggesting we just close the buildings at the end of the school year to save money?
No, I think it was the other way around.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on what was being talked about.
It was, it was in discussion of whether year-round school would be more efficient.
And what have you, well, you didn't get into the conversation.
No, because that came back to our laps.
Right, okay.
That's up to us.
Very good. They didn't want to touch it. Right.
It was just their idea.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have AC.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett.
So moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, board members, you should find a copy of Little Harbor's newsletter, Harbor Lights, where Principal Grossman has put together a snapshot of the many things taking place at the school. He has an interesting, I don't know, what is it, Reflections from the Shore or something? I don't know. Interesting. Wish you were here this evening.
That looked pretty wild. A little moment.
You do have some information about what Steve had referenced, the Coast Trolley Alliance. As a result of the efficiencies committee work, we're going to introduce a pilot program at the high school that'll run through June, where essentially our students can get a free ride on the trolley to any of the regular destinations if they're able to present their school ID. And then there are a whole host of other rules that, of course, would apply, because they're not in the business of transporting our children, they're just taking advantage of the ridership on the coast trolley. I wanted to share with you the latest enrollment projections we received right before the holiday break. You'll see that there's a slight decline in the number of births to Portsmouth residents, and as an average, we yield about 70 kindergarteners per 100 births, so this really suggests that we'll see a decrease in next year's enrollment, and we'll see if that all pans out. We have 178 in kindergarten this year, and based on projections, we're to see about 145.
Wow.
So in other words, I think this suggests, and we'll track this, because one never knows, whether or not this signals kind of the end of that elementary school bubble that we've been experiencing moving through. The second element they talk about in the report is the steady in-migration that Portsmouth has experienced over the last 10 years. In fact, in the last four years, we've seen a 5% average of in-migration, folks coming to Portsmouth and attending our schools. But all of this is to suggest a relatively stable enrollment, and if the projection is right, and they were within 1/10 of a percent in their projection a year ago, they take great credit for that early on, we'll see a decline in all, across all grades of some 22 students next year. The report mentioned some other key points, I think, to keep in mind as we think long-term rather than short-term here, how building permits have slowed considerably in the last decade here in the city, and on a more national picture, how the economic downturn has resulted in a number of folks actually postponing having children. So there's some data to suggest that when they looked at 25 states. So that's helpful in informing our budget presentation. I did want to say that you have a letter from four families who actually bid on a gourmet meal that was provided by students in the culinary arts program, so that letter extends thanks to Chef Perrin Long, to the students, and to the school board for supporting the culinary arts program. And I was asked by Dr. Shulman to provide you a copy of the city charter, and I'll let him speak for that later on in the agenda. We'll have a little surprise, I guess, at the end of the meeting. No, I'm just kidding.
No surprises.
That's the report. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? I don't know what that was all about.
Just a quick one, Mitch. Just on the coast trolley, you know, one of the things I thought might be helpful to add to our website, and I went out to coast website, was just, you know, and it might be something that we need to do a more exploded map, but I was curious to just know, where does the trolley stop? I see the signs, I drive by them, but I have no idea what the actual route is, and so I went out to the coast website, I took a look, you know, and so the information's there, but maybe getting that information, putting it out, you know, announcement, you know, high school, put it onto our website so that people actually have that linkage.
I think it's two routes in particular that we're talking about.
Forty-one.
Yeah, there you go. And they run from community campus down to downtown and then out to the mall area.
Okay.
But we can do, I think there's a communication, Jeff will probably address it when he speaks later.
It's in worse, okay. It was like, great idea, but like, where does it go?
Right. Any other? So I'll just briefly mention, you know, the issue with this charter. I just, I didn't know if everybody on the board actually had a copy of the charter or had seen the copy of the charter. I think it's a good thing for everyone to have, especially since, I guess, the city might be doing, looking at the charter questions. And there are a couple of really pertinent parts of the charter that refer specifically to the school board, and I think it's helpful to understand, you know, where we stand in certain issues relative to the city, municipal government, our own light item control of our own budget, those kinds of things. So that's the only reason, I just wanted to make sure everybody had this and read it. Yes?
Do we want to put it on a future agenda item if there are things that people want to discuss?
If people want to, actually, as a group, maybe consider getting information to the mayor?
And then bring forward to the committee.
Sure, I suppose. You could do that. Dexter?
No.
I don't know what the timeframe for the city is in terms of this.
I think they've just formed it.
Yeah.
We're starting to form.
Well, just read it, think about it. Okay. That's all. Thank you. I was kidding. I'm sorry. Hilarious.
It's a little disappointing, because...
All right, so we're up for district reports.
Yes. Principal Collins, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Just to address Mr. Martin, the plan, actually, we met with, I met with Representative from Coast yesterday morning, Mr. LaRose, to kind of talk about the logistics of rolling this program out. And you're absolutely right, one of the things that we did discuss was updating his website and also creating a link to that website on our website as well. I, like you, drive past it every single morning. There's one on the far side of Andrew Jarvis Drive, there's one actually run underneath the school sign, not knowing exactly what it is. So our plan is to make announcements throughout the school day to students, starting, actually, they were to begin tomorrow. Also having representatives from Coast at the high school during lunch and after school, and also trying to set up a meeting time where parents can come in the evening session to get an understanding of what this initiative is all about, and what the past or what this program entitles our students to. It's a pretty significant endeavor, and I think it's going to be of great benefit to many students at Portsmouth High School. So we're laying the groundwork, we're putting out the logistics, we'd like to start, to begin it as soon as possible. You're absolutely right, that information needs to get out there, and it will be shortly.
Just, you brought a thought up in my mind about, will, is it Mr. LaRose from Coast? Or will Coast actually be tracking ridership?
Yes, they will. They will.
Will they be able to report that back to us, just so we can sort of, you know, ascertain, you know, effectiveness?
Yes. I believe, I don't know that piece of it, and I, but through our discussions, he will be tracking the ridership of students at the high school, and I believe that is part of the report that he'll be making back to the efficiencies committee or the city council.
Because I'm, you know, where I'm going is just the curiosity of, do you currently ride a bus today? Yes. You know, am I taking the Coast bus in lieu of taking the yellow bus type thing? You know, just understanding, you know, I don't take a bus, but I'm using it to get around town without my parents. You know, I mean, so just interesting demographic stuff.
Absolutely. Thank you once again for inviting me here this evening to speak a little bit about Portsmouth High School. This fall, we welcome back in our beginning of the year report, 1,119 students at Portsmouth High School, which is a fairly large school, largest since I've been here. We had 309 incoming freshmen this year. Included in your board packet, I covered a number of significant events and significant happenings thus far this year. First of all, starting off with the Nichiinan visit, a special congratulations and thanks goes out to Assistant Superintendent Steve Zadrevec, and also Wendell Perrington for all their work in really bringing this program together. They did an absolutely incredible job of, well, the entire school community did an incredible job of welcoming these 20 students from our sister city, Nichiinan, Japan, which started off with a kickoff event at Wentworth by the Sea Hotel, and ended really with tears in our cafeteria as the kids were leaving. Tears from our students, our student ambassadors, and also from the kids leaving. We've received multiple correspondences since then from the students and from the city of Nichiinan, Japan, and also from the school in which they came. They're very interested in continuing on with this program, this exchange program, and hopefully it's something that we can certainly continue in the future. Just kind of skipping around and hitting some of the highlights, it's very interesting at this point of the year where the college, college acceptances start to come in fast and furious. As I mentioned in the report, just before Christmas break, or the holiday break on the 23rd, there were 70 clipper ships on our college acceptance wall. As of, I don't know, about an hour and a half ago when I left, there were 79 up. So within a week and a half, there were nine more acceptances. This is something that began last year, where we placed a clipper ship with students' names across the top of it, and put it on the wall opposite the guidance office for all to see. And on the sails of the clipper ship, we write the names of the colleges or universities that the students have been accepted to. The list is very impressive thus far this year. Also, in preparation for this and getting kids to really be thinking about, especially our high school seniors to be talking, thinking about colleges and universities, this is the second year we offered a college alumni, or excuse me, Portsmouth High School Alumni Time, where we invited alum who had, who are back for the holiday break to spend a lunch session with some of our seniors, our graduating seniors. They were just a great wealth of information. It's fantastic to see many of these kids coming back, being able to share their freshman, their experiences, their freshman year in college. The questions range from what to bring, what not to bring, how to get along with your roommate, what not to say, how to conflict resolutions with your roommates, some wonderful things, including, you know, how it is to be, we had a student there who came back from Oregon, and what it's like to be so far away from home. So I think it was very informative for our students, and again, it was wonderful to see many of our graduates back. As part of the grant application that we applied for over the summer for small learning communities, we were asked to take part in the National Student Clearinghouse, which tracks our graduating seniors. The information has been very useful to us, and it's something that we hope to continue. One of the, I don't, I'm not sure if the superintendent has shared this with you, so if he has, I apologize for repeating it, but it tracks student data upon enrollments into different colleges, and it tracks them over the years. Our class of 2009, the fall following their graduation from Portsmouth High School, 62% of them enrolled in, actually enrolled and attended universities, four-year and two-year colleges. Within that year, it'll track it within that year, that number had risen to 67% within the first year. And it also tracked last year, which would have been their second year, and 73% of our graduates had begun enrollments and attending colleges and universities. I think this is an important data piece, and it's something to look towards. And talking with our college counselor, Shannon Grunier, more and more of our students this year are really looking at gap years, looking into years giving back, or some community service aspect within their year after graduation. So I think this is an important trend, and something that we need to continue to look at. Some very important work with our NEASC reaccreditation is really beginning to take shape and take hold. We have started our preparations for a year-long self-study, which really got underway at the end of last year. We took the opportunity to break our faculty up into, into groups of each standards committee. The NEASC reaccreditation committee is chaired by Diane Canada, our CTE director, and also Roseanne Valuja Clark, one of our student services teachers. The teachers will be in these study committees for this year-long study, really of self-assessment of the standards that NEASC has put out for public secondary schools. And we will be, this is in preparation of our decennial visit, which will be in the fall of 2012. So we're really looking forward to that. I think it's a great opportunity for us to sit back and take a look at best practice standards across the country, and evaluate ourselves on how we adhere to those practices. Moving on quickly, I know the superintendent told me to brief, and I apologize. The Clipper Marching Band, once again, had an absolutely incredible year, which really culminated in the final exhibition at Portsmouth, which we hosted at Portsmouth High School on our brand-new field. Probably the most telling thing, the place was absolutely packed. People wall-to-wall, if you were there, it was just an incredible experience. And seeing the tears of joy and, you know, sorrow, that this was many, for many of our kids, their last performance in Portsmouth High School uniforms as they were marching down the track, was just absolutely incredible. So certainly kudos to our Portsmouth High School Marching Band. There are a number of other things that I have placed in there for your consideration, including a rain guarding, which is a grant that Ms. Kimberly McGlinchey and Dee Barrett received, along with the ECO Club, and that will be built right adjacent to our football field. Eric Gagnon, who won a competition to be the guest conductor for the Boston Pops, which was absolutely amazing, he got to go out there and do sleigh ride for the, for the packed house at the Verizon Meyer Center. Students giving back, our holiday raffle raised over $3,000 for needy families this holiday vacation. Friends of Rachel, and a coordinator effort between Friends of Rachel and the entire school. Stuff a Truck, it's a new initiative, got many people involved. Special thanks to Mr. Stokel. This was going on in conjunction with our school play. Special thanks to him, from all the elementary, middle school students who came up, and were asked to bring a non-perishable food item for that. Going down the line, and finally, it's, I think it's important to note, one of the most incredible things this fall, as far as sports are concerned, although the boys made it to the state football championship for the final time, it was the first time in school history that our girls, excuse me, our girls soccer team had made it to the state finals in soccer. After two overtime, double overtime, penalty kicked, nail-biting, nightmarish overtime victories in the quarterfinals and semifinals, they made it to the state finals. An incredible group of young ladies, they did an awesome job, and they represented the school in the best way possible. Going on to talk a bit about our SMART goals for this year, our SMART goals and our PLCs are off and running, as they are this year, from groups looking at, or different PLC groups looking at everything from conclusion writing in sciences, to precise of writing in social studies, physical education, taking your cue from our NEASC scores, or, excuse me, NEASC kneecap scores, where students have, we've identified areas where students are having trouble with, looking and interpreting graphs. The physical education department, as part of theirs, not only is looking to increase student physical fitness, but plotting and charting their progress towards those goals with formative assessments, starting with their physical fitness test, and ending with a culminating physical fitness test at the end. Not only are they required to, you know, go through the activities and to improve themselves physically, but also to chart their progress and interpret the graphs at the end, and make goals and set goals based upon the interpretations of the information that they're plotting. Two goals in particular that I'd like to spend just a brief second explaining, things that are very exciting for me. Number one is the math goal, and looking at student achievement by the increased use of technology. This year, the SMART goals, the, within the math department, the math department is actually broken into algebra segments, so teachers teaching Algebra A, Algebra I and 1X, and Algebra II. Different goals were established based upon key guiding principles or within those classes, solving linear equations, graphing and writing linear equations, and quadratic equations, key elements to each of the curriculum in those areas. The teachers took an audit of the current types of technologies that they have in the classroom. We were also very fortunate this past year, this past summer, to purchase MIMIO technology, which is a smart board technology that we now currently have in use in a number of our classrooms throughout the school. Also, an increased use of the Moodle, our Moodle pages, and to see how we can increase student achievement based on an increased use of technology. It's very interesting to look at, you know, a lot of the data is preliminary at this time, you know, with common formative assessments created, really looking at chapter overviews and chapter tests from last year to this year. We've seen increases across the board, however, in chapter tests, from comparing last year's student cohort to this year's cohort, we've seen increases of about five percentage point on each test, which is fairly significant. The interesting piece is, as they're looking through this, they're seeing the, kind of the increase, or the base knowledge, because there was a better sense of the base knowledge, the increase throughout the chapters, since these concepts are spiraling throughout, you see a greater growth as we move throughout the rest of the year. So from a change of a plus 4.92% for the Chapter III exam, to almost nine percentage point increase from last year's cohort to this year's cohort. Algebra II, for example, again, with the, they've seen a marked increase of almost six percentage points increase on the Chapter V test from last year. Probably the most telling thing with the students, what they are seeing, or what the teachers are seeing, is really an increase in learning outside of the school day and outside of the classroom, where students are really taking the time to look at the Moodle pages, the teachers are asking online guiding questions, requiring the students to actively engage in this and respond to these forums. The kids are exploring different applets for, for the, for Moodle, but they're also exploring smartphone applications as well. I was talking to one of the math teachers this year, and she said, you know, Jeff, it's just incredible. We had, you know, I have a kid come up to me who got an iPod Touch over Christmas, and they went home and they're exploring graphing calculator apps for the, for their smartphones. So really, we're seeing an increase in this. I'm very much looking forward to the data that's going to be collected and disseminated at the end of this, at the end of this, and it's something that will certainly continue moving forward. The other thing, the other interesting thing too, is the students were asked to explore the internet and explore out there in the cyber world, different, different apps or different YouTube videos regarding linear equations or quadratic equations, and to post them onto the Moodle sites. And the kids would get to critique those sites, what helped, what didn't, what was beneficial to me, what wasn't beneficial. So it really expanded that, the mathematics classroom, beyond the 90 minutes that they had within the class. The second one that I would like to just spend a brief moment of explaining in a little bit more detail, is the student services and what they have decided and where they're looking for this year. At the beginning of this year, there was a concerted effort to really work with the 11th graders in preparation for the kneecap tests. This was going to be done in our, really what our intervention blocks built into our school day through study centers. Students who scored, who scored below proficient on their eighth-grade kneecap scores, were put into study centers, and much more time and energy was placed into test prep skills, but also bringing up basic knowledge and basic skills. Students were pre-tested, they were, individual course of study was designed to improve their literacy and numeracy in a very short period of time. Portfolio assessments were created so that there were checkpoints along the way. From those portfolios, we saw some significant growth in the very short period of time. Ultimately, the test will be when our kneecap scores are returned to us. We are very hopeful that certainly the work that was done will have prepared our students a lot more for this kneecap assessment. But I can tell you through the portfolio analysis and through the common formative assessments that they completed, certainly much progress was made in a very short period of time. Based upon that, and as a jumping off point, our student services are really taking a look at our intervention blocks with these periods of study within the day, to really help the students improve their, not only their test-taking skills, but their basic skills. As I mentioned in your packet, it's a chance to really retool and really look at how we are providing these services for the kids that struggle in certain areas. As an aside, and as a connection between the mathematics work, a lot of the information and the, the, the notes that were created in order to do PowerPoint presentations through the use of the technology, have been given to the study center teachers so that they can reinforce the skills and the concepts within the, from the math teachers right in their study centers. So starting this second semester of this year, really retooling some of the kids and pulling these students out that need additional supports in their basic skills, not only that, but on their test-taking strategies as well. We feel it's very important, since kids are going to be taking the kneecaps, Accuplacer, PSATs, SATs down the road, but they also need that extra help with their basic skills and literacy and numeracy. So we're very much looking forward to that initiative this year, and hopefully we can, the students will reap some very positive results because of it. Some upcoming events this year, obviously, Semester One exams begin January 20th. Course selection process has begun for about half of our school. selection process has begun for about half of our school, will continue on through the second, through the beginning of second semester. Junior college planning night is February 17th, the Pops concert is coming up on February 23rd, and I think many of you received an email today regarding the High School Penguin Plunge. This will be the third year in a row that Portsmouth High School has taken place in the High School Penguin Plunge, which is the high school version of the crazy adult version of it, and Portsmouth High School is going to be doing it. Mr. Roble has really taken this on and spearheading the charge for Portsmouth High School, a number of the teachers and faculty have agreed to, I think it's shave in the name of Penguin Plunge, so if we are able to raise a certain amount of money, we have all taken a pledge to shave. My children haven't seen me without this, and quite frankly, it'll be very interesting to see, so a number of us will, if we raise $5,000 for the Penguin Plunge. What the money goes to, it is part and parcel, a fundraising opportunity for, yeah, there you go.
I was gonna say.
Thank you, sir. That is part of the shameless promotion.
I want a part of that.
Yeah, exactly. You want to be the one who shaves, so. Stand in line, my son. The, all the money raised goes to Special Olympics of New Hampshire, we're able to designate a certain amount of the proceeds to Special Olympics of Portsmouth, there's a, it's a great program here, the, the work that is done here and the value in it is absolutely incredible. We've hosted the basketball tournament for many, many years at Portsmouth High School, we will continue to do so, and it's just absolutely amazing seeing these student athletes go out there on the field of competition. There is a movement afoot right now through the NHIAA to include adaptive sports in more of the competitions, and perhaps looking at making it a full-flo, a full-fledged piece of the NHIAA. Team Portsmouth, actually, this year, the soccer team competed in between, at halftime of the Boy State Championships this year. We're looking to expand that to basketball and give these kids the opportunity to compete in some of the larger venues in front of some very large crowds, so anything that you can give to this, certainly one thing is to see us all shave, the other thing is it goes to a great and worthy cause. Thank you.
Great.
Yes, Ms. Walker?
Could I just mention also that the student that raises the most money is going to have the fun job of shaving Arthur Ashley's head?
Yes.
So along with you and seven of the teachers, is Arthur Ashley's head as well.
Arthur Ashley's gonna go bald.
Awesome.
All in the name of charity.
Who's the school board representative who's gonna be taking the punch?
I'm not, and I thought.
They often take pictures.
You ask.
So are there, are there any question, are we ready for questions? Are there any questions? Yes, Kent?
Question I have is, and it's always great on the student reporting of what the students are doing, and I've heard through rumors and newspapers that the Portsmouth Listens is gonna have the study circles, and I was kind of surprised that the Portsmouth Herald and its editorial last week said that they realized that the school budget was one of the largest things they have, I think that's always been there. But my question towards you, Jeff, is that if study circles are gonna be successful, and again, whether students do or do not, I would just put it out there that if we have high school students that wish to participate within that, I think that if, the only way study circles would be successful is if they did have input from the high school students and this type of information. What makes an education is very important in the classroom, but it's also the community it has. So, again, I'd put it out to you that, you know, maybe if Portsmouth Listens wants to contact you and if there are students that wish to participate, it wouldn't hurt for them to give their opinions of, and their thoughts of what an education is at Portsmouth, and we may learn something. Thank you.
I have just two quick questions.
Yes, sir.
So, so you're noticing that more and more students are interested in taking a gap year, that's what you were saying before?
We've seen that.
Right.
We have to go through the data, but it's something that we've been discussing, that actually came up at a guidance meeting last week.
Do you think, do you have a sense of whether that's partly due to the economy and the cost of colleges, or not just the idea of giving back? I mean, do you have a sense of that?
I think it's a combination of both, and we'll figure out as the year goes on and sitting down and talking to these kids a little bit about it.
Okay.
I think it is a sense of exploration and seeing what else is out there and giving back. We have some kids doing some absolutely amazing things in this, you know, what they have planned for this gap year of traveling abroad and going to other, working with Doctors Without Borders as a game plan for a kid. It is truly amazing, we have seen an increase of kids going to community college through the community college system, we've seen that, as a place to stay at home, work, to knock out their Gen Eds, the general education requirements, and then move on to four-year institutions.
Yeah, that's a good strategy.
It is a cost savings measure.
It is.
We see, you know, kids of the acceptances, they get some pretty amazing, the colleges that they get accepted to are pretty amazing, and in the end, when they do the economics of it and look at it, it's cheaper to stay home and save the, save the money so that they can go on to graduate school.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
I was just gonna comment on that really quickly about the gap year, because I have a lot of friends who are considering it right now, and there are the two biggest reasons for it, like you said, is financial reasons, people, most of my friends that are doing it or considering it are thinking that if I'm going to college for four years, I should be pretty sure about what I want to do with those four years, and they don't want to be not really declaring a major for a while, so, and also, there's been a big increase in opportunities to go abroad, just like in our school, to go to Costa Rica or go to Spain, and it was even like a thought that crossed my mind is that I might want to take a year and just travel and see that, because I have had friends that are in college now and have said that they did a gap year and went somewhere, and their experience at college now is so much more different and they're so much more directed, so I think it's also that, the fact that now, like from freshman year to now, where people are going to France, people are going all over the place, so I think that's another big reason. The only other thing I was gonna say is the clipper ships that need to stay, those are amazing, they're really fun, when you get into a college, they go on the wall, and it's silly and it's a piece of paper with your name on it and where you get in, but it really makes a big difference, and I remember like, I, the first school I got into, it wasn't even necessarily that I got into the school that it was, it was that I finally am in somewhere and it's going up and that my school's recognizing that I worked hard and all of that, and when the alumni came back also and talked to us, I went to that and I was kind of hesitant because I was like, oh, I have heard the stories, but there were a lot of questions that were asked that have calmed my nerves a little bit, calmed my friends, and have helped me kind of decide, because I, so many people applied to a wide range of colleges and stuff, kind of to narrow in, so if we keep that and we keep the clipper ships, I think that'll be great.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, sir.
Who's next?
Ms. Canada? CTE?
I want to thank you for inviting me here this evening to talk about CTE, Career Technical Education. In your packets, you'll find the report that I prepared for you that outlines many of the highlights of each of the programs, but there are a couple of things I'd like to speak to this evening. First, we had a collaboration between the Architecture and the Construction Trades Programs with the Gundalo Company at Strawberry Bank, and we were approached to design and build a pavilion slash workshop tool shed for the Gundalo Company, so the architecture program designed plans for this specific building, and the Gundalo Company submitted the plans to the Historic District Committee, and it was accepted as submitted on the first submission, which we were thrilled about. It is good, yeah. And now the Construction Trades students will be building the shed, the workshop, and when it's completed, the Gundalo Company will be building a replica Gundalo in that building, so it's a wonderful way for us to collaborate with the community. The other specific thing I'd like to highlight is again, coming out of our Construction Trades area, the woodworking students, we were approached by Wendy McCool from the organization, My Breast Cancer Support, and she asked if we would be willing to make hope chests for the organization. So the woodworking students were able to make a number of hope chests, which are just small boxes that they painted very festively, Wendy was thrilled with them. The hope chests are now at the five area hospitals where people are going in for their breast cancer treatments, and in the hope chest, there are things like manicures, gift certificates for manicures, pedicures, facials, dinners, anything that could brighten the day of somebody who's receiving cancer treatments. So, we're very excited because not only did the Portsmouth Herald feature that project, but we've also been approached by New Hampshire Chronicle because they are going to be doing a piece on My Breast Cancer Support, and so they'll be talking about the woodworking students and their piece of that. So we're thrilled. Around our SMART goals, our SMART goal was to increase students' ability to access and use information, they have shown a significant improvement and we are continuing that work this year. One of the, and I know I spoke to you last year a little bit, but one of the difficulties that we have as a career tech center is that each, each teacher teaches their own subject area, so it's difficult sometimes to find that common area of instruction. So when they talked about students being able to access and use information, they were able to find, each one of the teachers had a different idea of how they might assess that, so they have a common assessment tool, but they also are working now on an assessment tool that's very specific to their career area. We talked, you were just briefly talking about opportunities for students, and I do want to point out that we are increasing our dual enrollment opportunities for students. Our accounting program is a Project Running Start course, which allows students to take the course here in high school, it is a college course, so when they graduate from Portsmouth High School, they have college credit on their transcript and it costs them $100, which is pretty good. We have also recently gotten dual enrollment with Southern New Hampshire University for our Culinary Arts Program, and we have increased our articulation agreement significantly. Most of my programs now have some sort of an articulation agreement with post-secondary. Upcoming events, on April 19th, the Second Annual College Career Fair will take place between Shannon Greiner and Pam Wigan, last year, they coordinated a number of different employment opportunities, post-secondary opportunities, apprenticeships, and we had a career college fair in the center pretty much all day long on one of our days, and it was very, very well attended, very well received, the people, the presenters who were there were thrilled, and all want to come back, and we're expanding that this year. And on May 17th, the Eighth Annual Auto Show will take place, so we're pretty excited about that as well. The report is fairly complete and it's in your packets, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them now.
Great, thank you. Leslie?
Last year, the welding class made those amazing creatures that were on display at the library, and I noticed that they're doing a combination again this year.
They are, another collaborative move between the Art Department and in the welding program. They were fortunate enough to be able to schedule those two classes at the same time, the sculpture class from the Art Department with Nancy Carey and then with Bill Schaefer in the welding department, and they are planning, I don't have the date, I just wrote it down, but in the next few weeks, they're going to the Harvard Museum to, together, as two classes, two subject areas, and they're going to be collaborating again. Those are, those are so fun, I wanted to bring one home for my garden, they just were crazy things.
Well, one of my questions was, have you seen an increase in girls signing up for welding because of that?
I think we have a girl, so yes.
I noticed it was on my daughter's thing for next year.
One of the things that's, that I have to report to the state every year about our non-traditional student enrollments, and that's one of the ways that we're trying to increase that number. I would say, yes, we are seeing an increase, but the increase can be really small to say that we have one, so a couple of girls goes a long ways. We have talked a little bit about perhaps a jewelry-making class or something, but that's more soldering than welding, and it stretches it just a little bit too far, but I think with the, the interest of the Art Department, we can really show students and non-traditional students some other things that they might do with welding.
It is on my daughter's.
Excellent.
Form that she brought home today.
She'll love it, I love going in there, it is so fun, really fun.
But it's primarily because of the art combination, so I think that's really neat that you can combine those.
Excellent, thank you, I'll pass that on to Bill.
Great. Kent?
I think I'd like to follow on that, Dan, because it was on my list of things I wanted to ask, and, you know, working with you over the past years. Something that's always mystified me is that we put these, these career tech classes on a different scale when it comes to grading and so forth, and I think truly, we discourage, and I'll use the non-traditional students, that, that may be striving to be in the top X percent of the, of the school, but because the grade is weighted differently, it brings them down, it can bring them, even if they get an A in their, in the taking a class, and not taking something that's more traditional. I guess what I'm getting at is, how do we increase this? I think we have to have a serious discussion on many of these classes being weighted the same, because they're not gift classes, I think we quite often think of these students as gifted classes, but, you know, business is in there, the construction trades, all of these are ones that colleges now take a strong look at, has a student gone out and tried to look and be more inventive of what they're going to use their high school career? Because we offer a great opportunity within the career tech, but, you know, some of our top students really could use some of these classes, automotive and whatever it is, and yet, they actually, if they don't take a class when they get to their senior year, if they, you know, get to that last semester, the last half of the year, I should say, and they don't, you know, their class ranking doesn't change. I would rather see us somehow be inventive to say, look, take advantage of these classes at this time, and what comments do you have? Because I don't, I go on record many times, I don't believe in the way we weight classes, I think class rankings, another whole discussion, but we discourage top students from taking these in a way when it comes to weighting classes, I mean, it does, they'll tell you.
Well, when I was, um...
And I have, Savannah down there shaking her head, it's horribly wrong.
It's difficult, and truly, there are two things, and one is the block of time that our classes take up, but when I was teaching, certainly, you know, I would have very high level students taking my class, you know, certainly Linda's son Ryan, you know, was in my class for three years, enrolled with me, but it was a sacrifice in his part in terms of scheduling and what classes he could take and couldn't take. I would say that when I first started here in the Portsmouth School District 16 years ago, I believe we were weighted like one, so we got, anybody who wanted to go to college, they weren't taking our classes. Things have changed significantly, I would say, in terms of public perception of our programs, it's a constant struggle, obviously it is, but with now, with competency-based education, which is something that career tech has been doing for more than 10 years, people are having a second look at it. We're rated now, we're leveled at a three, and that was done over, I would say probably 13 years ago.
Yeah, it was about 13.
In an effort to make it more equal for those students who were going to college, who wanted an opportunity to take our classes and try on a career, we're the first ones to say, let's find out now, and what you were saying, Savannah, let's find out now what you don't want to do, you know, let's find out what you do want to do, but sure, let's find out what you don't want to do. I went to nursing school, it didn't last very long, wish I had gone to a nursing program or something, so, you know, I really appreciate what you're saying.
Well, let me actually put the challenge out there.
Okay.
The challenge is, I'd love to see in the top 10, maybe the top 25 students that graduate, that they take, that they have taken a career tech class. I don't think that has happened, prove me wrong if so be it, if somebody is ranked in the top 25, I would like to, they can't, is that correct?
Ranked in the top 25.
Yeah.
Ryan got As with Chef Pinkham the whole time he was in high school.
But I'm saying any one of those, if they took one class.
But it won't, it won't work.
It won't work, see?
Because when you do the multiplier out, it's not weighted high enough.
Yeah, that's true.
He doesn't get the same buoyancy, either A in culinary, and, you know, this kid's working at a five-star resort in Key West making great money, well, not great money, but he's making money.
You doing better than the teacher, like?
No, no, I'm still paying the bennies, but I'm just saying, I mean, this kid went in there and he got a job, but he was not ranked in the top of his class and he should have been, his grades would have, but his, but the weighted count, and I was pretty crabby about him not getting to National Honor Society, but it buoyed him out.
Correct, yes, I've seen that time and time again.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's an unbalance.
It is very unbalanced.
Thank you.
So, could I ask you to just take a minute or two and explain the weighting to us? How that works?
Let's fix it.
Or maybe at another time?
Another time, I would love to come back and talk to you about that. Thank you.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Any, yes, Carol?
Okay. Sort of following up on this conversation a little bit, and I apologize, I have not made an appointment to meet with you and really see your program firsthand. I need to do that, and I apologize.
I'd love to have you back.
Thank you, I'd like to do it. How many kids in your program go to college? How many don't go to college? The ones who don't go to college, what do they do? Where are they? What are they doing two or three years after graduating from Portsmouth High School?
I would say that it sort of varies year to year. I will speak specifically, we, in terms of our post-secondary placement, we typically see 50% or better of our students going on to college, but I would say that I can't give you a specific number whether or not those students are going on to college and studying what they studied in the career tech center. That's something I would have to get the
Oh, yeah.
real accurate information for you. But I would say at least 50% or more of our students go on to post-secondary, whether, you know, it be college, two-year college, four-year college, apprenticeships.
Right.
One of the things that's been taken out, and I know this simply because it's another one of the reports that I get from the state, we have to submit that information, and that comes back. If we do not make what the state thinks is an appropriate number for our kids going on, I have to write an improvement plan, and I haven't had to do that, that's the good If they're not going on to college, are they in industry? Yes. They're, I mean, obviously, they're working. I would say the vast majority of our students who go on are doing something in the industry that they studied when they were in the CTE Center. If you go into Pick 'n Pay, there are kids in the management training program who are my kids, you know, several years ago. So, they sort of get this insight, then they graduate from high school, and like any of it's like, "What am I going to do for work?" Well, I know about food, or I know about welding, or I know about construction. My wood gets delivered every year by a student who does wood, does construction, and with a lot of the leftover pieces and the clearing, he delivers my wood to me every year. So, that's another piece of his business. So, we are in the process, and this is something I've been working on for the last 12 months, having my teachers start a database, so that what we can do is try to track and keep a hold of students. It's much easier now because their emails don't change, and typically, their cell phones don't change. It's been much more difficult in the past because we send out these mailings, and send them out, and send them out, and the amount of responses that we get back have not necessarily been very large, if we can even get in touch with a former student. So, we're working on that database through, using emails. So, I hope to have some good information for you at the end of this year.
Right, okay.
SMART? All right, the other question I have is, you know that we're in a very difficult budget time, and the whole community is looking at all the departments and what they're spending money on, and we're trying to focus on core education. When I think back to when I was a kid, which is a long time ago, you know, I went to college, and I was pretty busy with all the classes I had to take in order to get into college. I didn't have time to take architecture. I didn't have time to take business. I didn't, I took English, social studies. Why is it that for college-bound kids, we have to provide all of, do they have the time for these courses?
They have.
I guess I'm just confused. I see that when I went to school, there wasn't any time for these courses.
Right.
So, if I were in school now, I still wouldn't think I'd have time for these courses.
It entirely depends on what you do for your schedule. You know, I'm with you. When I went to college, I knew the day I stepped a foot in Dover High School, what my schedule was going to be for four years, and I really, and I'll say this, I believe this professionally, but I know that personally, I missed out on an awful lot of learning because I learned how to do a lot of things in a book or out of a book, but I didn't learn how to do anything with my hands until I went to culinary school. I was out of college when I went to culinary school because I couldn't get a job. I had a bachelor's degree in psychology. Okay, so now what do I do with that? I went to culinary school, and I remember standing specifically in a skills class. It was a hands-on class. You know, I graduated college, and everybody else in my class, a couple had gone to college, you know, some had finished, some had not, and they're all getting it, and I burst out into tears. I was like, "How come, I'm a college graduate, how come I can't do this?" You know, I didn't know how to do anything. So, I think that, you know, people are really understanding more and more the importance of application of knowledge, and that's what it's about. It's being able to take what's here and putting it out here, and that is really, truly, what we teach. We're not just teaching kids how to cook. We're teaching them how to do the math that's associated with that, to work in ratios, you know, we're teaching kids, there isn't, our automotive program is very heavily computer-based, and if students don't know how to use the computer and use the software, they're not going to be able to fix your car, because your car's being fixed by the computer, not by the mechanic, you know, the technician. So, I think that more and more people are understanding that connection between learning something and then actually doing something with the knowledge. It's very, well, I want it, it's easy. For myself, for many of us who went to high school, studied four years of high school, went to college, and then got out, it's not that hard to learn, but then taking that learning and doing something with it. For me, something very tangible, that was real hard, and I think a lot of people struggle with that. Not only that, but I don't know how many of you get the Kiplinger letter, but in last week's Kiplinger letter, they were talking about how we, our students, are going out into the work world with absolutely no employability skills at all. They don't know how to dress. They don't understand this hierarchy in the workforce. They just go walking in and go, "Hey, Ed, how are you?" You know? Without understanding, gee, you know, maybe there's a hierarchy in here, or maybe you ought to know how to dress, maybe you ought to know how to act. So, employability skills are also something that is so central and so core to what we teach. I'm not sure if I've answered your question, it's gone around in circles, but I do absolutely understand the path of your education, and I would say that as a country, and Barack Obama certainly put this into his speech last year when he was talking about education, and we wanted the focus to stay on career technical education. It's about teaching our workforce, and that workforce, they're not just people who are graduating high school and going to work as laborers, they're people who are going on to college. And, you know, if you take in an architecture class, would it be easy to get into architecture school? I tell the story all the time. My niece went to Burwick Academy. She was National Honor Society from the seventh grade on. She couldn't get into architecture school. So, you know, where does that put you? If she'd had an architecture program at Burwick Academy, I bet she'd get into the best architecture school in the country. But, so, you know, I obviously am passionate, and I believe in, so in going back to what you were saying about scheduling, it's a matter of choice, and you have to decide which courses you're going to take and which ones you're not. There are certainly opportunities open to you. We have to do our part as well, and one of the things that I'm trying to do with, at the center, is instead of having, and I'm not sure this is going to be helpful, but I have to believe that it will, will be, is instead of signing up for Culinary Arts I, and you're there from September until June, in the traditional model of doing that as a junior, that maybe what we can do is have Culinary Arts I, Culinary Arts I B. And maybe you can take I as a sophomore, and you can't take I B as a sophomore, so you're going to pick it up the following year as a junior. And then if it's really in your interest area, you can take the full year, your senior year. I'm hoping that if we can, we can kind of mold and model our programs a little bit, it will open up that opportunity to more students. I'm hopeful.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Rebecca?
It just, this discussion is really bringing to light the disconnect between blue-collar, getting your hands dirty, and white-collar executives, and I think the fact that we don't weight these classes the same is feeding into that. And, you know, I'd love to be able to change the oil in my car or the tire, and I think this, you know, if you're college-bound at age 14, this is how you're going to spend the next four years of your high school career, and it just seems that, you know, we're not doing the best for our kids by doing that. You know, they need the hands-on, they need something in this. So, how do we fix this problem of how is it weighted? Is that a board decision? Is it a principal decision? These classes are, seem to be just as, if not more, important than, you know, your typical, "I'm going to go on to four-year college" courses, and it seems like we need to make room for it and make it available, and not have someone not placed in the top 25th percent because they got extraordinary grades in everything, but this one doesn't count as much. So, how do we fix that?
Well, I think it's a large, if you're, the board is interested in this, then I think it's a large process. I think you go back to the school, and you have a conversation at the school about the practice, the history, the tradition, why it is what it is, why you do what you do. So, it's not just the board unilaterally making some kind of decision. I think it has to be a far wider net here. And, you know, if that's what the board wants to have happen, we can talk with Principal Collins, and, I mean, I suspect it's not just in CTE.
Mm-hmm.
It's across a whole span of coursework. But it's a, you know, it comes with pros and cons, and people with interests from all, so it's got to be a very inclusive and engaged process, but it's certainly fine. I have no argument against it.
I mean, it sounds like it would be beneficial, but there certainly are pros and cons about it, so if it's
And I think the board needs to hear those.
If it's something the board would like to explore, it certainly seems worth it, and you changed it from a one to a three. You know, clearly, this is something that Kent has been, you know, discussing for a long time, so, I mean, why not add it to our plate?
Okay. I have Linda, Ken, Tom.
So, I think that part of the problem is, I think we have to break through and keep thinking that for a long time, there was somebody else that sat on this floor that made it sound like everybody who didn't go to college went to CTE. And I think that that perception has got to be, we've got to stop saying that it's blue-collar versus white-collar. There are engineers who take the architecture program. Architects are considered a white-collar job, so they go there and they do that. I have a son who went through the architecture program at high school, and he's an engineer. So, I don't consider him a blue-collar person. You know, he is a, not suit and tie guy, because that's not appropriate clothing for that job. And, you know, you know Ryan, he is certainly not like a blue-collar employee by any stretch of the imagination. Would you agree?
I would agree.
So, I think that we have to stop classifying people in that, in that way. I think that it's another opportunity, just like you have to differentiate your instruction for the kids at elementary school. It's a differentiated, it's differentiated instruction, so people will go that way because there's something that piques their interest. And if they're fortunate enough to be passionate about it, they'll go to college, and they will just pursue that dream. So, I think that we need to stop classifying it as white-collar, blue-collar, whatever color, it could be green-collar, just, you know, let the kids go and thrive, and thank goodness we have that kind of opportunity at high school.
We need to value it the same.
Well, that's exactly, we do need to value it the same, which is a bone of contention that I've sort of let go of.
Otherwise, we have those two distinctions.
Yeah, I've sort of let go of it, I didn't say "pass." Because I think it's critical, but I think it was a time that people thought that, you know, if you couldn't make it in four-year college, you went to culinary school. Well, I'm telling you right now, it's a lot of bucks for, you know, two years of college at CIA, but it's the way it goes, and that's the way it is. And he's thrilled, as I'm sure other people are.
Thank you. So, I have Kent, and then Tom.
Just a little bit different, my wife and I watched this weekend an outstanding film on Channel 11 done by the Technical School over at Timbaland, that actually, Timbaland, if you don't know where it is, is in Plastow. The film they did was on Berlin, New Hampshire, and it was about the paper mills. And where I like to connect, I mean, it was probably one of the finest films I have seen on Channel 11 since the guy there that does the baseball and the Civil War.
Ken Burns.
Ken Burns. I'm telling you, it was close to that type of quality. But where my connection, so that's showing that, you know, other schools value this, and I want to put that connection. But the other connection with this is, is that we do live in a changing society, and it is a very sad day that the state with the largest paper mills at one time now has no paper mills. And with that, guess what went? Banks went up there, restaurants went, support services went, so, and then we have no more shoe companies, where we were one of the largest shoe manufacturers, even growing up as a kid. I think the United States is going to wake up someday and say, "Wait a minute, that isn't what..." Because we, if we were to have these places, guess what? If we had shoe manufacturer, we had paper mills, the unemployment rate in the state of New Hampshire would be close to only about 2.5%, they say. And those jobs are as important and to the economy. I highly suggest, if you haven't seen that film, it gives you a perspective, and we've done the same. I've looked at our artwork or our creation out of the TV media, but here was one that was done, and haven't had a chance to give my buddy a call over there at Portsmouth, but I'm telling you, take a look at what happens in a career tech program. That film is going to make a big splash somewhere.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, I was just going to comment that I, you know, I mean, historians will probably point to the Industrial Revolution as the downturn of, you know, blue-collar workers, but, you know, that's a longer discussion. But I think the piece that is most interesting is that, you know, Rebecca points out that, you know, kids do grow up understanding very little on how things work or how to fix things, and so there is some merit to having some well-rounded just understanding of, you know, how to do things and how to take care of things. So, as you progress as a citizen in society, you know, you are able to take care of yourself, and whether it's through the career tech services that we're able to be able to do some of that things, you know, I myself subscribe to it, because I, you know, I went to culinary school. I went through a lot of hands-on, and to this day, I value my ability to work with my hands. So, there's some value in taking a look at, you know, how do we take it into the mainstream so that, you know, we're taking all students and making them more productive and sustainable as individuals, but also then taking a look at the program itself and saying, you know, as a program, are there things that we can make it more viable to attract kids that maybe would be interested in doing it if the value of that program was elevated? So, I think there's, you know, a combination of discussions that are going on, but I like the one that makes it a little bit more mainstream, because I think there's a lot of value to everyday people understanding some very basic things and how things work, you know? Because for me, you know, the relevance of understanding why I'm taking math, because it computes into how I'm going to cut this piece of metal or operate some machinery that's going to fix a car, I think suddenly connects a lot of dots for people, so. Okay. Thank you.
So, I just have two quick, maybe just to sum this up, because I learned a couple of new things myself this evening. So, maybe it would be helpful for, in terms of the board being educated a little more sometime over the next few months, really about what the weighting of grades is all about, as the superintendent suggested, you know, maybe present to us the pros and cons about it, so that, and who, because it's still not clear in my mind, it's who makes, who's the arbiter of that weight count? You know, I have no idea if it's a state regulation, it's a local regulation.
It's internal.
Oh, it's totally local, it's internal.
Internal.
Okay. I learned something new. All right. So, but still, I think that to have the conversation might be really helpful. Thanks.
I'd love to come back.
Thank you.
Have that discussion with you. Thank you very much for your time, for letting me come up and speak with you.
Okay. Diane? Ms. Wensley?
Hi. Thank you all for inviting me to come this evening. It's nice to see you all again. You do have a copy of my report. I hope you've had time and an opportunity to review it. I would like to take a moment and just highlight just a couple of things that are going on. The Portsmouth School District right now is undergoing a focused monitoring process put on by the state of New Hampshire. We were selected this year, we were notified in the spring, that we were selected to be part of focused monitoring. Focused monitoring is the process that replaces the old cyclical special ed approval process that was in place years ago. In the past, they would just come, go into the schools, look at IEPs, spend two days there, and then form their approval process, whether we met state standards or not, just upon that two-day visit. The new process is more a year-long study in which we explore the reasons why there The new process is more a year-long study in which we explore the reasons why there may be an achievement gap between students with disabilities and students without disabilities as assessed by the kneecap scores. So we've been working very hard since last summer exploring this question. We formed two teams, a leadership team and achievement team, that are working together, looking at, and what we've decided to do is narrow our focus to just looking at our math interventions and how effective our math instruction and interventions are at the elementary level. Sorry, I'm a bit nervous. Our achievement team is made up of our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, myself, a Title I director. We have the elementary principals on our achievement team. We have three general educators, and we have three special educators. And as I said, we currently are really looking at our, our math instruction, our core math instruction, the EDM program, how successful our kids are, looking at our assessments, and looking at what interventions we have in place. Are we putting the appropriate amount of time into instruction? And are we also consistently providing the instruction with fidelity to our students? So that's going on. Also, as part of focus monitoring, we do have that team that does come into the schools. They do randomly select IEPs, and it is a definite random process. I was with them when they did it, and it was basically, they're up on the computer screen, and they went like this and picked. So it was, couldn't get much more random than that. So they've been in all our schools. First met at the elementary school, they've been at the high school, the middle school. They will be going to the Lister Academy tomorrow if it doesn't snow. If it does snow, which we think may happen, we set a snow date for the end of the month. As part of the team review, the IEP review, they do look at IEPs. We have a whole case study that's presented. Our special educators, our general educator, our related service providers, and our visiting team members, and our educational DOE consultants all sit together at a table, and we talk about the IEP out front of us. We talk about the student. We talk about how the IEP was created. We looked at how the child is able to function in the classroom. We looked at the assessments the child has. And we looked at how we use these assessments in order to develop a good, sound educational plan for the child, looking at some good measurable goals, looking at some benchmark assessments along the way, and looking at what kinds of supports and services are needed. As I said, the reviews have gone very well. It's been a very positive process all along, and they have given us some really nice praise. They will be sending a report, which I expect hopefully the end of the month or in February, to see how that went. On another positive note, we do get, we have been getting monthly assessments by the state on how our special ed team has been meeting according to certain indicators. They use our NESHUS report, in which we submit evaluative data, discipline data. We are a very data-oriented cohort group. And according to our data, what we've been submitting, our indicators have been very positive. The data has been showing that we have a very, the parents are very satisfied with our special ed collaborative process. They're very satisfied with how our teams work with them in developing our IEP programs. Our graduation rate for our special ed students is above the state average. It's showing that we educate most of our students in the mainstream setting, which is the goal, providing the supports that are needed so our children can be in our regular rate classrooms accessing some good core curriculum. Our timeliness of evaluations is at 100%, which is a nice goal. It was lower than that. We wrote a corrective action plan, we really focused on that issue, and now it's at 100%. And our transitions from early supports in services, which is the state agency that oversees zero-to-three-year-olds, the indicator looking at that shows that as the children turn three, they're able to successfully and smoothly transition into our preschool program. So we've got some very good accolades from the state in those areas. I did outline a couple of PLC groups, and thanks to Jeff, he's already spoken about our Student Services Center. They have been doing some wonderful work, looking at our special ed high school students and giving them some additional supports and interventions. So they, we should be seeing a nice increase in our kneecap scores for our kids. Our school counselors and our school psychologists have been studying bullying since last spring. They became very interested in that topic. We knew the law was going to pass. We had Kathleen Dwyer come in and talk to our student, to our counselors way back in June. And since then, we've been researching, looking at our data. What are we doing in school? How are we providing some supports and services for our kids in, in the way of social, emotional, social relationships? And so again, that, that's an area of interest for them. They're researching what we're doing. They're also looking at what other districts are doing also. So hopefully, we'll be able to get a nice, consistent program district-wide in place. You also have a few charts and graphs showing our special ed population. You can see that we currently have 409 special ed children. That is up from 405 last year. So we have a little bit of an increase, not significant. Schools have been staying pretty stable. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Okay, great. Tom?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, you know, looking at all the students through all the different grades, does our sister SAU do as good a job as we do in the primary years? Taking a look at the fact that, you know, we have a smaller number, you know, we have what, 60 or students that are coming in? And the disproportionate assignments in special ed are higher than, than our entire population? So if you take a look, just for example-
Are we looking at the high school population, the SAU?
If we take a look at the, the two graphs here, the blue and the purple, and we have just Portsmouth students, 345, and then you say in 12th grade student with, you know, in the high school years with a, say, classified as SLD versus all the kids coming in, and you take a look at SLD, you know, ratings.
Specific learning disability.
Yes.
Yeah?
So we just, we end up having a significant number of kids coming in, you know, who have, that bump our numbers up. So I don't know how many students come in from other SAUs, because it's not six, it's not 60, it's more than that, I'm assuming. Is that correct?
That this-
We have 60 who are classified as special ed.
Right.
Right. But I'm saying, I don't know what the total number of kids coming in from other SAUs is.
And I don't know how many-
At the high school, Jeff, about 400, plus or minus, round numbers?
I'm just wondering, is the proportionality the same? That's all I'm asking is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I haven't broken that out.
I'm just wondering, are they doing, are we performing better than they are? Are they performing less than we are? Do they bring in students that we now are having to care for at a, at a later grade, which we have less of a chance of being able to remediate? You know, because if you're assigned, you know, at a younger age, and the longer you are, the, so you see what I'm pointing, I'm just curious.
There's, there's a few factors involved there. I don't know what their identification rate is. I know our identification rate is close to the state average. It's gone plus, up and down in the past few years, but it averages close to the state, which is about 13, 14%. I don't know what SAU 50s is. I do know there are a couple factors where you look at identification rates, a lot of, and if you look at our numbers also, you'll notice that in the primary grades, K1, 2, our numbers are at a lower percentage than they are as they get older, because we are trying to put the supports and services in place at a young age level, so that the kids don't get any gaps in their learning, and we're able to provide those interventions for them at an early age so that they aren't failing.
Right.
Is SAU 50 doing the same thing? Yes, they are providing the early intervening services also, as Portsmouth is.
Sure. Yeah, it's just more about, you know, where they are, are they doing as good a job, you know, are they performing at the same level or better than before last night?
Right. And I have not been noting any difference in their abilities once they come to the high school. Are we seeing a big gap in the learning or the education or ability of a student from SAU 50 and from SAU 52? Not that I know of.
Okay. Clay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, I just want to say that you did a great job with your presentation, and, and thank you for all the stats and everything-
Thank you.
-that you put into our packets. But I was just wondering about some of the information that you have here. You have all these abbreviations-
Oh, yes.
-under the different categories. I was just curious if, if you have any documentation of what all those abbreviations mean.
And probably what we should do in the future is put in a key for them.
Thank you.
For the disability-
And also what falls under them as well.
Sure. If we look at the first sheet where you have the grid of states disability, AUT is autism. DD is, so we have 14 students who are identified as being on the autism spectrum. 13 of them are Portsmouth and one from SAU 50. DD is developmental disabilities. We have a total of 36 that we are, have in the Portsmouth School Systems. ED is an emotional disability, and there are 18. HI is hearing impaired, there are seven. MD is a multiple disability, and we have three. MR is mental retardation, and that is four. OHI is other health impaired. Other health impaired can be a variety of factors. It could be a child with, with a syndrome, it could be a child who's got attention deficit disorder, for instance. ORT is orthopedically impaired, and we have one student. SLD is specific learning disability, and there are 165. SP is a speech disability, and there are 57. TBI is traumatic brain injury, and we have two students. And VI is visually impaired, and we have two students.
Thank you.
Great. I have a few questions coming up for you. I have Ann Mayer, Kent, and Rebecca.
Okay.
Yes, Ann?
I just wanted to speak just briefly to maybe answer, at least in part, the question you had about SAU 50 and how we're doing in relation to identifying our special ed students. And I can speak for Greenland. Our percent of identifying kids is about 10, 10%, 10.5%. So it's lower than the state average. And when you look at that first graph, the one that identifies, has the biggest section of blue, when talking about SAU 50, we're talking grades seven through 12, that there are 60 students, and then those biggest areas are other health impaired and specific learning disabilities. So those are the biggest two groups that we send along. So we could have kids with, you know, relatively minor learning disabilities, and I don't believe that this includes 504s, these are specifically kids-
This does not include 504s.
Right.
No.
So, you know, and we certainly work collaboratively with your special ed department at the high school to make sure that all those kids receive the services that they need.
Okay.
Those who don't know, Section 504 of the Disabilities Act is for students who have a disability, yet it hasn't been termed as an educational disability. That may be a student who's a diabetic, who may need some medical needs, but they're able to learn at the same rate as their peers.
Thank you. Kent?
Just want to go over the, actually, two charts, which is the Medicaid, Medicaid reimbursement chart. I'm always very happy, this has taken a dramatic turn up. I give Ms. Achilles a great, and many people that participate, but I know that she takes the time to enter the codes to make sure that we get reimbursements. I'm hoping that people are getting all the information to her, because we are entitled to that money. Long even before Steve Bartlet was here, I had this discussion, and I'm glad to see that we are now doing that. But what I'd also like to see with the Medicaid reimbursement, because it's down a little bit this year, is, as we've identified approximately 409 students, which does have the other SAU, so they get some of their own reimbursement sent over to us, is whether, you know, the number's only good if we compare it to the number of students. So if last year, we had 525 students, and this year, we have 409 students, we're actually not any lower in our reimbursement, it's just based on the number of students that we go ahead. Similarly, similarly, to the other side, which is the tuition revenue, which if anybody looks at, I know, I'm going to answer part of my own question here, is that, you know, 10 years ago, we were at $1,400,000. We're at just over $200,000. So just call it a $1,200,000 downturn in, in 10 years. That's, we either pick that up, or it becomes a cost issue somewhere within the system. But again, I think what's important is, you know, and I know it's not true, but maybe back 10 years ago, we had X amount of students more that were specially required treatment or had educational plans and so forth, and they were maybe 809. So is that why we've cut this down low? I know that's not it. But again, I think without knowing the number of students with each one of these years, it isn't as relevant to know. But again, I know that's not the truth, but I think for the public, they would need to know, do we have less students? We may have more students. We may be down to $200,000 of, of area tuition in and so forth, and it isn't. I know there's been corrections also on this.
But one of the things that did affect our tuition rate is, is we do have less programs than we had in the past, in which other districts would tuition their students into. Our kids program was much bigger. We had kids programs in the elementary school, and other districts would tuition their students that needed those services, more specialized services to Portsmouth. We also had a deaf ed program, and I know the deaf ed program finally disbanded a few years ago because there were no Portsmouth students in it, it was all tuition students.
That's correct. That was a big, that's a big difference.
Exactly.
That was your drop in '05.
Definitely has affected our tuition rate. As far as Medicaid reimbursements, we have to keep in mind that Medicaid reimbursements are only for services that are medical. So we can't get Medicaid to provide instruction to students. It's only for services such as speech, language therapy, counseling, OT, physical therapy. So it can only be for those services. We can collect some services if we have a paraprofessional or a rehabilitative assistant who is needed to work with that child to carry over the therapies. For instance, if they have motor needs, they may need a paraprofessional or rehab therapist to work with them in helping them with their handwriting or computer skills. Same thing with speech therapy, helping our kids with speech impairments or other health impairments in those areas. So Medicaid is only for things that are medically necessary, it's not for instruction.
Thank you. Thank you. I have Rebecca.
So with the, the abbreviations and the categories-
Correct.
Can it, I'm assuming a child could have emotional and hearing and speech?
Yes.
But they're not represented, represented in each category. Do you pick one? Do you, how does that work?
Well, it, some students have the multiple disabilities, and that's because they do have a lot of areas that they're looking at. These are just our primary disabilities.
Okay.
So some students will have the primary, and they may have a secondary of-
Okay.
And that's not uncommon for some of them.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good question.
So I just have, I have just maybe two quick questions.
Sure.
So one is, so you started out by saying, so this year, there's sort of a year-long study-
Yeah.
And the question is, why is there an achievement gap on the kneecaps for students, special ed students?
Right.
Right? And so your, so your team decided to narrow that to a question of, well, why is there an achievement gap in terms of math?
Correct.
And only- And only at the elementary level?
Right.
So my first question is, why the, why such a narrow view? And why not take a broader picture?
Well, we thought by having it so open and so broad and so general, you're bringing in a lot of players. We know the high school is already going through a pretty extensive self-study with the Niasc team. And so that was one of the reasons why we thought, the high school's going through a study, they don't really need to be as involved here also. Same thing with some of the factors with the middle school. I think we also looked at, especially in reading, our scores are not that low. If you look at our kneecap scores in reading and math, it's the math scores that really showed the lower level of achievement, along with the fact that there's been a lot of work and research and study that's been going into literacy the past few years. So we felt math was an area that probably has not been looked at as closely as reading.
Okay.
And as I said, our math scores were lower in those areas.
Right, and so you're looking at that over the course of the year, and then, so you don't currently have a good handle on that yet, but by the end of the year, you might.
By the end of the year, we'll have an action plan that will have been, that will develop in specific areas. And as I said, as we've been working together as a team these past few months, because it did start with, let's just, first of all, let's narrow our focus down. And we spent a couple of months saying, let's bring it down to just looking at math at elementary. So that took some study. And then we've been looking at our data. We've been looking at our assessment scores. We've been looking at our kneecap scores. And we've done that data study. Now we're looking at, what are we actually doing in the schools?
Okay.
How much time are we devoting to math instruction in each grade level, in each school? Is it consistent? Let's look at our math program. We're using EDM. Let's look at our EDM assessments and see how it correlates with the kneecap. Let's see how it correlates with our state standards. Let's see if there are any deficiencies in there that need to be addressed.
Okay.
So those, those are parts of our study.
Okay.
Let's look at what interventions can we put in place? Not only what interventions, and we do have a variety of them with some computer-based programs such as Study Island, with some programs such as Do the Math, Number Worlds, Touch Math that we're using with kids, depending upon their specific areas of need, whether it's understanding concept or just getting support with some rote memory calculation skills.
Right.
So what interventions do we have? And now, you know, another question is, how can we keep our students in our core curriculum and they can receive that classroom? And when can we find time to supplement that instruction with interventions?
Uh huh.
So.
Okay.
And that's at the point we are right now. Our plan is to further along and fine tune this so that we can come up with, whether it's an intervention block, or is it how to use assessments better and use that to design your instructions for some of these kids?
Okay. And I just had one quick comment. I thought what Kent was talking about earlier is a good point. You know, so we have, we have a lot less tuition coming in.
Yeah.
Not necessarily a tremendous number of less, of fewer students.
Right.
And we still have to pay. And I just remember a number of years ago, we've had these conversations where we budget extra money now from our budget, like $400,000 that goes directly from our budget into the sped column to cover many of the expenses which might have been covered in the past from tuitioned in students.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I believe, you know, we keep track of that number, get a pretty good handle, I think, on how much of that $400,000 is actually used. And I believe all of it has always been used.
Yeah, and it is being used for.
Right, so I just wanted people to be aware. You know, so there are expenses that we, that the general budget took over that were covered by tuition in the past.
And we definitely appreciate that. I mean, it is going to cover things like our options program.
I understand that, right. Right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
So moving along. Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me, in your packets this month, you have the month-end December financial report. I'll just cover a few highlights. On page one, you know, there are, there are a few minor red numbers. That's basically timing in the salary section. I actually went back and double-checked the backup for the plan because we were able to get a payroll out on 12/31 this year as opposed to moving it over to January. So required a little bit of an adjustment, but by and large, they're tracking the way we expect them to. Any variances now are well within tolerance. In terms of the benefit sections underneath it, I think the only thing there that we have any concern over, I guess, would be the substitute line. And right now, we have a substitute or attempt custodian, so that's what's, that's what's driving that up a little bit. And as you can see up top, we have savings in the custodial salary line, so those pretty much offset each other. That's all that's new in that section. As we go through and build the budget, we really end up looking at a lot of these numbers over again and closer so that I'm feeling fairly comfortable that these are in good shape at this stage of the game. I guess at this point, I'll go right to, right to page three, because the only other, couple of other areas of concern, one of them is if you go to the top of page three, the bottom section, out-of-district tuition. It was brought to my intention as we started this new year that there are a couple of additional placements which we did not have in our budget. What that means at this point is I have estimated, working with the special ed department, that I'll need to identify about $100,000 worth of funds in other areas to cover this. The same thing happened to us last year, but we were able, we were able to cover that. So I'm going to work on identifying other areas to cover that in the next couple of weeks. The other one of note was that we looked before and said that the energy was, was a little bit off plan. There are two, two reasons for that. One of them is we were made aware of a billing error from last year on one of the, one of the vendors, as we were trying to put all the savings together. So there was actually some, a couple of bills last year that should have been billed last year that they didn't do. But we did go through and audit it, and they are in fact real. So that caused that to go up a little bit, and of course, we started, got a little colder a little sooner this year. So it's just a shift in, in the plan. As you can look at, at the overall budget, I think we're still at a good point where we still have an opportunity to manage what we have left to get through the rest of the year.
Any questions?
Just a quick one, yeah. I was wondering if we had a really, really cold December, you know, but, because that number was off.
Yeah.
But the, two things that had popped out when I looked earlier were, just going back to your comment about the substitutes a couple of meetings ago, and I'm trying to remember is the overage because we are trying to track a tighter goal? Or is it just the fact that, you know, we're just off, off our number? Because I know we're trying to reduce that number, we had a goal to reduce that number, so.
Smart goal, 10%.
Yeah, it is, there is, it was a goal to reduce that number. So it does put more pressure on variances.
So is the number.
In timing. So right now.
So, so we've got some disaggregating to do in terms of the teacher, the teacher line, which is where we were really focusing our attention.
Yeah.
And so we have a number of long-term substitute placements across all classifications of employees that just show up in that general number. We have to disaggregate that a little bit so you can see that.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure if suddenly this is showing that we're waiting, we're going to be, or is it just a little blip and that we're going to be back in line?
And you know what happens is you just charge it to the sub-line, which is appropriate. And, and what you do is you're covering for a teacher who's been out since September.
Sure.
And so you're going to see savings in the salary line. So we just have to, we just have to make it transparent so you can see that.
Yeah, yeah.
This is, I appreciate you bringing that up, though, Don.
Yeah, no, and then, this is probably because it's early in the year and we just have budgets and these are small numbers, but, you know, knowing that Don Darrow, Little Harbor, I mean, the delta in terms of class size and so the size of the schools, you know, there's a $16,000 swing in terms of their spending, you know? And so it's early in the year, supplies and all that kind of stuff, one's buying more, one's not. So it was just ironic that, you know, why, why does one need a lot more and one's like, hey, you know, we're going to hold off, we're going to have this little kitty and we'll buy stuff later? I'm just curious.
Well, actually.
Must learn from a year ago, perhaps? I don't know.
Possibly, yeah.
Part of it's a learning curve with the new principal, too. You know, we did, we, no, I mean, to be perfectly honest, this same comment came up to me last year about one of the other schools that had a newer principal. Why is this, is this a problem? And I said, it takes them a full cycle to get used to how the things flow and where things come and go. So I would, I'm feeling and having, and had discussions with Principal Callahan, that that's exactly the same situation with her this year, so.
Okay. If you want to see that change, tonight we have the discussion that we need to freeze budgets. It'll be gone tomorrow.
Don't say that.
Dexter. Steve, could you just comment on the public transportation line? Is that just timing?
Which one? Oh, pupil transportation?
Pupil transportation. I mean, we're way under, is that just a timing?
That's just timing because we end up, it's a, because we don't really have any bills until after, it starts in September, the first bill. It's not a 12-month cycle, it's a, it's a 10-payment cycle. And generally, on the special ed side, it takes, there's probably about a six-week lag in that. So that, that'll catch up.
So it'll catch up, Don, thanks.
So Steve, I have, I have just a couple of quick questions. So, so there are two additional sped placements that we didn't know about at the beginning of the year when the budget was made.
Yeah.
So, so what are the kinds of expense areas that that $100,000 comes out of? As an, just as an example? You need to find another $100,000 that you didn't plan on.
Correct.
So how do you work your magic? What kinds of areas?
Especially don't pay the bus.
Who don't we pay?
No, we try to, we try to pay everybody that's do anything at all, but we try to manage it and if there are things that, you know, are not absolutely necessary, if we need to hold them in abeyance for a while, it's the same thing we did last year. We're able to, you know, try to go through and look. And there are a couple of things where, just as, just as we're, we have unknowns and it costs us more, we, you know, we estimate and we have unknowns that ends up costing us less.
Right.
You know, so it just, it just, it takes a few cycles to weed those out and identify them and push them aside, so.
Big chunk of money, though.
Yes, it is.
That's why we talk about it being unpredictable.
Very.
Okay.
You don't, you can't put a wallop around the city, I'm afraid.
Great, okay. Thank you. So moving on to old business. Consideration and approval of a policy?
Yes, it's a child find policy you saw our first reading of in December.
Entertain a motion to accept this for second reading and then have discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yes, Kent.
Not specifically on the policy itself because it is one of need and it's actually required through the state, through legislation by the state. But in saying that, because the state is requiring us to have the child find policy, here is a perfect example of unfunded mandates. This is, and should be publicized, this is a mandate by the state of New Hampshire and the feds that we have to have this. Is it a good thing to have to make sure that we're finding and identifying these students? Yes, but it comes at a cost. For example, under item 5A, failing to pass a hearing or vision screening. This is a very, and I can tell you from firsthand, secondhand, I hear it through my lovely wife, and how they have to do the screenings of hearing and vision. This is, we bring in outside help, and the nurses department has to do this. It's been required for many years, and it is something that happens. Then we go to the other side where we talk about the number of private schools and so forth. This is now extending their hand out. It's doing the right thing for a child. I always stand behind that. But this is new ground, and it doesn't come at $0. This is a mandate and a policy that will have financial consequences in the immediate future.
Just a quick question about the, to the policy group then. So H, we're talking about H in terms of private schools and G. So is that new or has that always been around or as far as you know?
It's always been. Exactly. Most policies have been longstanding.
But the point is still well-taken.
Right, it's been around, but now it is policy, it is, you know.
It's continuing to be policy. It's not new policy.
No, it's not new policy, it's extended policy.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Still have a roll call vote?
Carol Chelman.
Yes.
Kent LaPage.
Yes.
Dexter Legg.
Yes.
Rebecca Emerson.
Yes.
Ann Walker.
Yes.
Mitch Shulman.
Yes.
Tom Martin.
Yes.
Leslie Stevens.
Yes.
Clay Hayward.
Yes.
Moving on to new business, it had been brought up at the last meeting, that we, the board was interested in having a retreat. So I think not to do it tonight with all of our calendars out, but I think that we'd like to, you know, sort of set one up in the next. We really haven't set it.
Yeah, so what I thought I'd do is Mitch suggested a software or some email system where I can put it out, put out a number of dates for the month of March, maybe looking at those Tuesdays that are not otherwise scheduled for an extended time or Saturday mornings. People could look at that, kind of, check in when you're available, send it back to us, and then I'll report back in a couple of weeks as to what it looks like for a retreat date in March. Okay? Good, sounds good?
Good. Great. And you had your dates, right? You need to let me know those again. Right. Okay, so then we'll move on to committee reports. So policy, anything? No?
I know the committee is meeting again Thursday morning at 9:00.
Yes.
And we'll be working on a first draft of the facilities use policy. And it was suggested subsequent, I met with Attorney Sullivan from the city, that we actually workshop this matter in front of the full board. And he's suggesting January 25th, which is your next workshop session, because there are some implications and there are some decision points that you as a board really have to take so that we can craft a policy that meets what you want to see happen. But we'll look at that Thursday morning at a policy subcommittee meeting, 9:00 in my office. But we'll bring, we'll bring back kind of a first draft to the board for a full-vetted workshop session in January 25th.
Okay.
Evan.
Yes, Rebecca, sorry.
So given our, our public speakers tonight, will the policy committee be looking at an advisory letter going out to fourth-grade parents about the State House?
I suspect that'll come up for conversation and what, how to best proceed with that because it, find out to what extent do we visit? Is it the fourth grade? I mean, I don't, there's some details.
It is.
To be gathered around that. And then I think informing parents is just fine. I think that's absolutely fine.
Right. Okay. JBC.
There's really not much new to report from our, my December report to the board. I mean, we're waiting for bids to come back.
Wow.
And that will be at the end of this month, and we expect, we're cautiously optimistic, we're going to expect good news in those bids. And when we get them, we'll have a GMP and we'll be able to report back to you on that. And then activity will pick up this, this quarter because we're still planning to break ground in March. There's, there's been a bit of a lull, I think, in the public communication. We will be holding a public forum with butters and interested citizens to talk about the construction management plan. So we're going to begin to see a lot of activity on the Parrot Ave site by the, by the end of the first quarter. And, and the Granite, the Granite Street field is pretty much buttoned up for the winter. They've gone as far as they can, and they'll complete that, that field in the spring.
And technology, just a quick update on.
Yeah, we, we've had a couple of meetings just prior to the holidays, and we continue to have some discussions with a couple of different companies. So we had a discussion on actually finalizing a proposal to take a look at what the cloud computing model might look like here in the city. And we're trying to schedule a meeting right now because they actually have a proposal to present to us, just so we can actually see some real numbers and, and do a comparison and get our, our folks to start taking a look at and digesting it. We also had a meeting on professional development because it's part of, of anything that we do, even if we continue to use the technology that we have, is really to try to formalize the, the development of how we use, implement, streamline systems and services that would be part and parcel to using technology. So the, we had a presentation that took a look at kind of a, a formalized and systematic approach to using some of the tools that we're already using, where teachers use Moodle today, they also use other platforms out there. But this gives a set of tools and that people can start to use and standardizes it, as well as an instructional component that would actually push a lot of the stuff out to a lot of the teachers. So you have some that are early adopters and some that have yet to really dip their toe in the, in the water. So we had that discussion to understand a little bit about what this company could be able to provide to us, knowing full well that if we move forward with whatever the technological solution is, you know, keeping what we have or moving into a different direction, understanding, you know, how those other components would be needing to be in place to support whatever changes or directions we move into. So we've got some interesting discussions coming up that we'll be moving forward and have some stuff to report out.
We should schedule another meetings.
We've got some dates out with Tom Lots, and so we're trying to actually get that meeting with Hewlett Packard and ClassLink within the next two weeks.
Great. Okay. Seeing nothing else?
Mr. Chair, just, you know, with our guest speakers tonight, it reminded me that our last, at our last school board meeting, when we went home, if you watched the news that night, and we had craziness in Arizona and we wished everyone well, and, you know, there's sadness there. But when we went home on our last school board meeting down in, I can't remember the district, but there was a school board that was shot that exact same night. So I think we do need to be aware of our surroundings. We are, you know, a society where somebody might get offset. But, you know, I do think it may be discussion point and so forth, but, you know, again, here we sit and we don't get anybody in, and, you know, we want them to come on in. But, yeah, the slingshots too. But I think, you know, I appreciate them coming and giving that discussion point because it's not singular to just the state houses and so forth. It does, you know, something that we have to. And, you know, that school board was, had its issues that night. So hopefully we never see anything like that, but I appreciate them coming and giving that discussion point.
Thank you.